Wait a second. All right, go ahead. All right, call the meeting to order. Any items from the public? Since there is none, it looks like there's a adjustment in the agenda there.
Yes, sir. I had Jennifer Swisher scheduled to talk to me about some rescheduling proposal for central dispatch, for our emergency dispatch center. She had to be in Charleston today and we thought it was more important for her to be there. So we've rescheduled it for next week. So we'd like to remove her.
Okay, at ten fifteen?
Yes, sir.
I move we approve the agenda as modified for the ten fifteen removal and for October the twentieth, twenty twenty-two.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Your motion carries. Any questions on the purchase order? All right, no internal budget revision, Mr. Davis?
No, sir. I have none today.
We do have one change in status. We have a letter of resignation received from the day report center for Joseph Mercer. The second, effective December thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. We also, any questions on change of status? We have the minutes that everyone was present on October sixth, two thousand twenty-two. Any adjustments or corrections on those? County council. County council calendars will be here next Thursday on the twenty-seventh. On November the Tuesday, the eighth, the offices will be closed for election day. And boards and commissions, we have nothing tonight. And Monday, the twenty-fourth, one P M historical landmarks, five P M water district. Wednesday, the twenty-sixth, ten A M conventions, visitor bureau, three P M senior services, four P M Berkeley County Criminal Justice Board. And Thursday, the twenty-seventh, five P M ambulance authority, five P M library board. Any changes on the boards and commissions? Then we have a bond release. Harvest Glen grading permit tracking number is R O one-one-seven-four dash two-zero. B C P file number is zero six one dash one eight tied to tracking. R O one-one-seven-four dash two-zero, bond number one zero zero five zero seven four eight zero. Engineering department has made that recommendation. Any questions for Brian on that? All right, need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
You have a motion on the floor. Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. We have nothing for this assessor today. So we're all right to Mr. Barnhart, board and meeting report, sir.
Two weeks in a row, huh?
Yeah, that's good news, huh?
Yeah. Well, I had a board of health meeting in Berkeley Springs. Part of my reports are pretty much the same, though. We did have the introduction of Tanya Manley, who's now the nursing supervisor. Under new business, there was new action under R F Q for soil scientists. They had one applicant. They decided to take over that title and continue looking for more and more applicants.
So he wasn't qualified?
Well, they felt that he was not qualified in the fact that he had never worked with septic system.
But they're looking for soil samples.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, there you go. And then I had a M P O meeting at the airport. It was fairly routine. They had a one of the agenda items was all the freight handling in Washington County. And I asked, I said, you know, truck traffic. I said, was any of this rail traffic? And they said, no, no rail traffic at all. And I said, you know, of course, it just referred to Washington County, so you know, to carry no further than that. And at the end of the meeting, I gave them an update on the expansion of the rail of the bike trail from the jail to the city and said, you know, it's been mapped out and, you know, now getting you know, trying to acquire rights away and that kind of stuff. And they were very excited about that. And Mark Walden was there and he reinforced the city's end up. He said, all we're doing is making it from the state road small cop and, you know, the junction of the city and Martinsburg. And, you know, they were very excited. And in fact, Matt said that was one of their top priorities a couple of years ago, you know, extending that in the city of Kansas. Very well, Mr. President. It's been a long, ongoing conversation.
Yep, yep.
Mr. Delia.
I had a Main Street Martinsburg meeting. And discussed the big event coming up this weekend. That was probably the highlight of the, of the meeting, having those discussions and what to anticipate and how all that's coming on. Which would be the food truck event, which last year ran out of food early. So hopefully all those vendors understand that they need to bring a little more to the table, that's for sure.
No pun intended there?
Not yet. The, but also had a conversation about nominations moving forward for next year's appointments. That they want nominations within the next two weeks so that they can do that at their next order meeting.
Vice President Whitaker.
I had no meetings, but I did attend the, I had the distinct honor of being in the Apple Harvest Parade and had to actually I drove the honorary county person designated. Oh gosh, Bob Taylor and his wife and grandson at the parade. So it was very nice.
Great. Councilperson Gokena.
Yes, sir. Finally, commission meeting on Monday evening. We had three public hearings and they were pretty much uneventful. It was a very short meeting. Parks and Rec went on Tuesday. The master plan has been marked up and has been sent back out to Michael Baker for some changes. The hotel motel fees are up for Parks and Rec as well as C D B, I guess. And anybody who's interested, we need some basketball officials.
I've been to some basketball games.
Is that the guy that's got to run back and forth to court?
Well, if you play it right, you can, you can do a short court with the other guy. But
I was gonna say, them little motorized carts don't move fast enough for me.
So they're, they're looking for, for some, some folks to help out with that. And it, I mean, it's a pain in the heart. I think it's twenty-five dollars a game, something like that. So they typically would schedule three or four games, you know, a day. Also on Saturday, along with the Apple Harvest festivities, which, you know, like Mr. Whitaker said, is very successful. I think they had a great day for it. And I congratulate the committee as well. There's a lot of work that goes into that. But also, Baker Heights had their official open house on their new fire station. And I would encourage anybody that would like to stop by, to swing by, take a look. It's a beautiful building. They did a very nice job with it. I'd like to congratulate Baker Heights Fire Department and their leadership. And also the fire board with Hunter Wilson and Donna Claus. They did a tremendous amount of work in pulling this together. So just really, really a nice facility that will last this community, you know, the next fifty to sixty years. So congratulations to them.
It was a very nice event.
Thank you, Eddie, on that. I did have a fire board meeting, but I was out of town and was not able to attend. And, and like Councilperson Whitaker, Vice President Whitaker and Councilperson Gokena, Baker Heights, who does have a very nice home and well deserved. And, you know, so right now there's Hedgesville had their new one built, what, twenty years ago? This one? Yeah, man, and South Berkeley got theirs done about five years ago. Baker Heights just got theirs and Hunter Wilson and the board has acquired property for that new station. So doing a really good job and all those fire stations were sixty years plus. Yep, so they've been pretty much out, outdated.
All right, so board and commission vacancies, any activity there?
Mr. President, if I may. Penny and I had a conference call on Tuesday with bond council and our bond underwriters for our first ten million dollar bond issue. During the course of that, and we've established a very, very aggressive timetable so that hopefully by the week of November seventh, we'll already have our first, second, and third reading of the bond resolution as well as the public hearing. Week of November seventh, we would have our conference call with Moody's to get our rating, receive our rating on the week of November fourteenth and price our bonds hopefully during the week of the twenty-first. So that gives us about three weeks to get through a pretty, a pretty intensive process. But during the course of, of that meeting, I was reminded that we only have three members on the building commission. We typically carry four. If the council will recall, Chad Cole served one appointment on the building commission and did not want to be reappointed. So if you can think that we have two Republicans and one Democrat, we really need one Democrat or independent to be appointed to that commission. The caveat is, as you know, the appointed person, the candidate can't be one in the other county boards or commission. So if you know of an independent or a Democrat that we currently do not have on a, on a, an existing board of commission that might be interested, we could use that extra person.
And there's a, there's a five-member board, or four? Oh, it's five.
Five.
All right, so we have two updates.
We do.
Okay.
So, you know, and if, you know, something happens that one of the three would get sick, then we're down for that.
All right, and also, Mr. President, Mr. Delia had mentioned about Main Street doing their appointments. I'd, I'd like to nominate Dan to Main Street Martinsburg. I know he's been very, very active. He and his wife actually both have been very active with Main Street, so I'd like to make that recommendation.
I'll second him.
Have a motion on the floor and a second. Any discussion?
You expired?
He expired a long time ago, Jimmy. All right, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion to re-put Ian Morgan to the roundhouse board.
Have a motion on the floor and a second. Any discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
And you have a, you have a application from Craig Potter for the senior services. I'll go through the office, get the interview started.
All right, any other activity? All right, any other activity on Boards and Commissions? All right, boys, it's y'all's turn. Honorary council people. All right, come on up here.
He's an edge.
There it is.
I can't see it.
All right. Come over here. You're gonna repeat after Pappy. Rob, stand over here.
Hold on, you, you can't even see him because of the chair.
Chair's too big.
There you go. All right, look at Pat. Stand over here. Look at me, look at me. All right, all right. You're gonna say your name. Put your right hand up, your best worn hand. Right hand, Robert. There you go. All right, look, look at Pappy. All right, ah?
Hi.
Jack, Lincoln and Robert.
Robert.
Lincoln, do swear.
Do swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will uphold.
That I will uphold.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of West Virginia.
Of the State of West Virginia.
That I will work hard.
That I will work hard.
To fulfill the responsibilities.
To fulfill the responsibilities.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of honorary council member.
Of honorary council member.
To which I have been.
To which I have been.
Appointed.
Appointed.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Are you under law?
Here, here, Jack.
Yeah, I mean, y'all did good.
That was a great job.
Lincoln.
Yeah.
And Rob.
Yeah.
Get over here in my chair. Leave it, leave it in there. Leave it there, buddy.
I found a pants.
We'll get it. All right. And also. Uh, more patience what you used to imagine. We started off this morning getting all three of them dressed and there was an accident in the bathroom. The half a cup of coffee got knocked all over the floor.
Oh my God.
That was patience, Jimmy. All right, uh, Jennifer, you're here. We're running ahead schedule. Are you planning on anybody else being here? Okay, you wanna come on up and, um, you wanna read the LED grant resolution? If you would, please.
Likes me to read it?
If you would.
Absolutely. So, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
So I am here, so the LED grant resolution is, um, funding that is administered through the West Virginia Economic Development. And the purpose is to enhance economic development in Berkeley County. And all the, all the counties are eligible for this. Funding, it is in the amount of $22,727 that I am requesting, so.
Okay.
The resolution. Whereas the governing body of Berkeley County is interested in the economic well-being of its citizens and the community at large. And whereas the governing body is prepared to support appropriate efforts within the community to promote economic development. And whereas the governing body of the Berkeley County continues to support the Berkeley County Development Authority for their efforts to grow our economy. And whereas the West Virginia Chamber of Commerce, the West Virginia Economic Development Council and the Governor's Office of Community and Industrial Development continue to offer support, financial support that is designed to help West Virginia communities become better prepared for industrial and related economic development. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Berkeley County Council that our community wishes to participate in the local economic development grant program, that the leadership of this community fully realizes this program requires dedicated effort. And be it resolved, be it further resolved, that by receiving these monies, the, we are pledging our ongoing efforts to support and grow our business community. And be it further resolved that the grant monies require the existence of a local economic development organization. And the Berkeley County Council designates the Berkeley County Development Authority as representing our community for the purpose of participation in this grant. This resolution is in full effect of its adoption on 20th, on, this resolution is in full effect of its adoption this 20th day of October 2022. Adopted this 20th day of October 2022.
It looks like we have a type error.
Yeah.
So, all right, well, thank you, Jennifer, for reading that. Uh, entertain a motion to, um, adopt the LED grant resolution for the Development Authority.
Second.
Have a motion on floor and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Boys, can you tell Ms. Jennifer to have a good day?
Have a good day. Thank you very much. When I heard it was your birthday.
It's Robert's birthday today.
Well, happy birthday.
He's five. So, we had a bunch of sugar this morning, doughnuts and chocolate milk.
That's a good way to start the day.
Do we have any candles?
I do.
Okay.
Yes.
Oh, boy.
Uh, all right.
Thank you.
We'll get her signed. Thank you. Um, all right, Mr. Davis, you wanna catch some of your stuff going?
Um, the first matter that I have for the council's attention is a bid award recommendation for, um, the fiscal year 21, 22 and 22, 23 Building Commission Audit. Um, as the council's aware, we did open, um, proposals for, uh, the Building Commission Audit. For those two fiscal years, we received two, uh, bids. One from Tetrick and Bartlett out of Clarksville, uh, the government from Perry and Associates out of Marriott at Ohio. Um, we have done business with, with both firms. Both firms have done an excellent job. And, um, both are listed on the CPA firms appointed to conduct audits list as approved by the West Virginia State Auditor's Office. Um, Tetrick and Bartlett has, has actually conducted the Building Commission Audit for a number of years now. And they are very, very familiar with our, with our operations. Um, for the past two fiscal years, uh, they charged us $4,000 a year to conduct the audit. Um, we did, um, review the audits in accordance with procedure manual, um, for procuring and conducting audits as provided by the State Auditor's Office. Uh, as a result, we wish to recommend that the fiscal year 21, 22 and 22, 23 Building Commission Financial Audit be awarded to Tetrick and Bartlett uh, in the low, lowest responsible bid amount of $4,200 a year. Um, there will be an additional 8% administrative fee added to that, which we pay directly to the West Virginia State Audit, Auditor's Office, bringing the total to $4,536. And we did budget $5,000 for this audit.
All right, um.
I'm waiting to see the state get their credit.
The state gets 8% from everybody.
Well, that's good.
Jack, turn around, please. Um, okay, all right, we have, um, entertain a motion for the, uh, bid recommendation for Building Commission Audit.
Second.
Have a motion on floor and a second. Any discussion on that? If not, on all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Did you say aye, Mr. Ja, uh, Robert? Okay, good job. All right, we have a bid recommendation for County Council Audit?
Yes, sir. Um, last Thursday, uh, October 13th, we, um, received and opened audit proposals for the County Council's Fiscal Year 21, 22 Financial Audit. Um, this is an audit, um, last year that we had to put out for bid three separate times before we got anyone to bid. Um, this year, we did receive one bid from Perry and Associates CPAs. Uh, Perry and Associates has, again, has conducted our County Council Financial Audit for a, a number of, of years now, and, and they are very familiar with our operation. We did receive notification from 11 other firms that they were not, uh, available to conduct the audit. Uh, last year, their charge for conducting the audit was $32,750 plus the 8% that we, that we paid the State Auditor's Office. Um, as a result, uh, of the review of the, of the bid, um, the Audit Committee is recommending that the Fiscal Year 21, 22 County Council Financial Audit be awarded to, be awarded to Perry and Associates in the low bid of amount of $33,250. Um, the 8% administrative fee paid to the West Virginia State Auditor's Office will be $2,660 for a total of $35,910. And we did budget $50,000 for this particular audit.
Okay, entertain a motion on the bid recommendation for County Council Audit.
Time moved.
Have a motion on floor and a second. Any discussion on that one?
My only discussion, Mr. President, would be to Mr. Davis. I know that, uh, Perry and Associates has been, uh, recipient of this, uh, award the last couple of years. And I know, obviously through our changes in the process with the electronics, the computerized stuff, it's probably made it easier for them to do the audit in much quicker manner. Uh, and I also know that through your all's, uh, expertise, that last year there were no findings of, last two years, sorry about that. But, um, I mean, I, I don't, I don't wanna, you know, scrutinize more than what the law requires, but do you, do you think they're drilling down?
They, they are. Um, in, in years past, we would have a team of anywhere from five to 10 auditors come in and spend an entire week with us. Certainly during the, the pandemic, um, we, we did not have boots on the ground the, the way we had had previously. Last year, we did have, we had seven, seven auditors here. Um, fortunately, um, with, particularly with the new, the new system, the new MUNIS system, um, they can do a lot of their field tests, their sampling electronically. Um, we can provide them access to MUNIS, um, where they can read. Of course, they can't change anything, but they can win and, and access all of our, our records. Um, so, yeah, they're, they're, they're giving us our money's worth, um, just in monitoring grants. Um, they spend an incredible amount of time going through our grant paperwork to make sure that we're, we're in compliance, don't they, Tracy? Um, so, uh, you know, if we have a federal or state grant out there, particularly as it involves CARES, ARCA money, they really drill down to make sure we're compliant. So, um, I know they deal a lot with Penny, um, certainly Sherry, Chuck Young, uh, with Cox Holiday. Um, spend a lot of time gathering information, um, and then they provide us with a list of everything that, that they need. So they were here for two and a half days.
Yeah.
But we had fed a lot to them in advance of that.
They, they have a, a gap, or general accounting practices.
Yeah.
Guide that they have to go through. And they have to meet those standards in order to, to do our audit.
And then the West Virginia State Auditor's Office does random sampling of the audits that they do to make sure that they're doing. And, and, and you have to meet so many benchmarks, so many key indicators for the, to even make that list from the State Auditor's Office.
I just know, previously, you know, through CMI, they even would pull lead, lead balances and stuff, you know, Chuck. I was pretty impressed with that, with the actual looking at that. Just wanted to double check that you guys were very comfortable with it.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. The record shows six to zero. All right, um, let's move up to, back up to the bid opening at 10 o'clock for the RFP, a Berkeley County Procurement Card Program. Tell us a little bit about this program, Mr. Davis, and if you have heard anything else back from?
We have not.
Okay.
Um, we, um, years and years ago, we had our own credit cards, our own procurement cards. And as council knows, when, um, legislation was changed to allow, uh, counties and municipalities participate in the P Card Program, this, the West Virginia State P Card Program, um, the council at that time, commission at that time, decided, uh, to participate in that program. Um, initially, it was with, um, United Bank and they, they did a very, very good job. Um, then, you know, several years ago, it was put out a competitive bid and, uh, the P Card was moved to a company called Fifth Third. Um, and the service has been substandard. Um, it's hard for us to, uh, Penny and Tracy and I are all P Card administrators. Hard for us to go in and change limits. Um, everything has to be done in duplicate or triple, triple kit. And it's hard for us to, to make the changes through, um, even through the client portal that's been set up. Uh, we were notified, uh, um, several months ago that once again, effective January 1st, um, the P Card Program is being changed yet to a third, um, bank. Um, as we reviewed the contract, there were some, some items in the contract that were a concern to us, um, that absolutely gave the State Auditor's Office a little bit more control over your finances.
Basically telling you what, basically regulate you when you could spend the money, when you couldn't, right? They had to approve the spending?
They did. Um, so that concerned us. We never even brought the contract into you because I, I couldn't in good faith recommend that and sign. So, um, at the direction of the council, we did put together a request for proposals for the Berkeley, for Berkeley County Procurement Card Program. Um, we direct mailed it to eight financial institutions. Um, we did, uh, advertise, uh, the, the RFP in the Martinsburg Journal. We do have certification publication on file, um, indicating that, uh, it was publicized on Wednesday, September 21st, 2022. Um, we received, uh, correspondence from the Jefferson Security Bank uh, indicating that, um, they were going through some, uh, internal credit card service, um, changes. And they, although they were interested in the program, that they were not, um, in a position to really commit, uh, in, in the long term for, uh, this type of program. The, uh, deadline for bid was four o'clock yesterday and we received two bids prior to the,
Two bids?
To the, the bid deadline. These proposals will be very similar to the proposals that we had where financing of our various projects. Um, primarily, we'll be reading, um, the, the bid into record. Um, we, we issued, um, a two-page questionnaire, um, to all the, all the interested, um, bidders, um, that talked about, you know, replacing of cards, uh, expenses, fees, discounts and rebates, um, annual card fees, late payment, software fees, so on and so forth. So, um, we will go through these proposals, put together a spreadsheet for the council in the coming weeks.
Do you know how many transactions a month they hold?
We, that was actually in the RFP that we put out. Um, not as many as you would think. Uh, in fiscal year 21, 22, um, through the P Card Program, Berkeley County spent $392,750 procurement card purchases and had a total number of 2,491 transactions. No.
It could be considerably more.
It, it could be, um, but again, with the, the, the issues that we were having with the current P Card company, we, we, we've been doing a lot by check.
All right, the first one is from the United Bank. And the United Bank has offices, actually, they were gonna say their address is 500 Virginia Street, East Charleston, West Virginia. The United Bank is the first one. All right, the second one is Twisk, which is the old One Valley Bank. And they're going to say their address is one forty-eight South Queen Street, not in Berkeley, Virginia. The main bank is going to be in North Carolina. So that's bid number two. How many bids do we have?
Two.
Okay. All right, take them back down, Mr. Davis, please. All right, the next bid opening, we have RFP for yoga instructor for the Health and Wellness Grant.
I'm going to let Tracy explain the next two bids. We did distribute the RFP for yoga classes, and it was advertised in the Martinsburg Journal. We do have certification of publication indicating that it was publicized on October twelfth, 2022. The deadline for bids was four o'clock yesterday, and we received one bid, which is what we received last time.
Yeah, we did.
The previous yoga instructor had some things that came up that were conflicts, so she couldn't fulfill the...
Yes, she couldn't fill the balance. Her schedule ticked up where previously it was fitting to her schedule, and she's now moving back and forth from Morgantown.
I believe that instructor was out of Jefferson County or...
Jefferson County.
Steve O'Nutt, I was thinking.
So approximately how many participants have been in this class?
Highly, in the Sheriff's Department, they had between eight and nine per class. It fluctuated, but that was their average. In emergency management, it was a little. It was more consistent with emergency management, Randy's department, than it was with Jennifer's department. Jennifer doesn't run a typical three schedules, morning, afternoon, and midnight. So hers was a little bit difficult because it was a non-traditional schedule, and it was somebody would pop in every once in a while. But with the traditional schedule of emergency management and the Sheriff's Department, they had better participation than she did, and it was just because of her schedule.
And this is all through the Department of Justice, bringing it.
Yes, through the mental health.
Hundred percent funded.
It's part of the criteria.
Part of the criteria that we added in our brand.
Exactly. All right, Jackie, you ready to go to yoga classes?
I'll go with you.
I don't qualify, so. All right, so one bid that we have is Marlon Powell, and that is here in Martinsburg, West Virginia, and is a certified yoga instructor. December first, 2022 to September thirtieth, 2023, forty-two weeks, would be four hundred and fifty dollars per week, seventy-five dollars per session, at a total price of eighteen thousand nine hundred dollars. Okay? All right. All right, pass that one down. All right. The next bid opening we have, thank you Tracy on that one.
She's going to stay up there.
Yeah, she likes being up there. She likes keeping you straight. Is for RFP for Training and Technical Assistance for Targeted Violence and Terrorism Prevention Grant. And this is for the Police Department in...
Emergency Management, yeah.
Right.
There's training involved in this, but this particular RFP is for consultation for the teachers of the grant to, for this company to come in and set up a very well-planned and usable emergency operations plan for the whole entire county for targeted violence.
And is this the four or something like that grant?
Yes.
Okay. So Eddie, I think this is what we was talking about when we was down Charleston. The governor wants to start up, and we're already one step ahead. They set aside two million dollars to do this for the whole state, and we got a four hundred and down there grant for Berkeley County, so.
We did advertise this in the Martinsburg Journal. We do have certification publication on file indicating that the publication date was October twelfth, 2022, placed on our website and social media platforms. The deadline for proposals was four o'clock PM yesterday, and we've received two proposals per the deadline.
All right, the first bid is Police Foundation doing business as National Policing Institute out of Arlington, Virginia, and their bid is a hundred and seventy-eight thousand seventy hours and fifty-four cents. Hundred and seventy-eight thousand seventy dollars and fifty-four cents. And this is the grant that pays overtime and all that, right?
No.
No, it doesn't.
Those, that grant is still outstanding.
Okay.
One of those.
All right, the next one is Summer Point Training Facility, right here in Summer Point, West Virginia. Which is actually changed to federal government.
DSR, used to be DSR.
A hundred and sixty-three thousand thirty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents. One sixty-three, thirty-nine, thirty-one. That's pretty close. Concludes our bids, right?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you Tracy. Anybody have any questions?
No, I don't.
What's your question? You don't understand it? Okay, well, do you have any questions?
No, I don't understand it.
No? All right, at this time, thank you Tracy. He just didn't understand it. All right, this time we'll take a break. Mr. Lincoln Masco, will you hit the gavel?
Hit the gavel, Lincoln.
All right, we'll be back. We got to take the phone.
Who go get the hammer this time?
Jack.
Alright, Jack.
Alright. We're back in session. Hey, young man. You gonna run this meeting or I'm gonna run it?
Depending on the way I feel so.
Next.
I just can't say it out loud.
Next, our agenda is Randy Lilly, Emergency Service Director, Donnie grew up the third, trauma program coordinator. WDU Medicine, Discussion of Mass Casualty Unit Partnership. Wait, I got it.
So, coming before you this morning, more for information and support from the council. But previously, several months ago, the council was where we obtained the mass casualty trailer and the truck. And prior to us getting possession of that vehicle, there was quite a bit of money that the insurance authority actually had put into it, bringing things, getting things up to where they needed to be.
We had to put four new tires on it, right? Six tires or something?
Correct. So, you know, once we obtained it, there were still a few things that we needed to do. We replaced the tires on the trailer. We have since installed a radio inside the trailer, so we have communications in there. And we, Jerry has taken care of, we have a dual gauge issue in the truck that's been taken care of. We replaced one of the batteries of the battery truck.
They said that that truck is an intro, both are in really, really, really good shape.
Excellent shape. The truck has less than 2,000 miles. Ninety, four hundred miles, I can't remember the exact, I think someone run it. Ninety-four hundred miles, I can't remember the exact, I think somewhere around ninety-four hundred miles is, actual miles is on this truck.
You know how we do that in the field though, Randy, when the fuel gauge stops working, we just set the tripometer.
Right. I did not want to be halfway down the road somewhere and that thing run out of fuel on me, so. But I think Gary and his team, inexpensive, they repaired that and repaired that, so it's in tip-top shape.
Alright. That was our low-profile international, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
No, it's a GMC.
GMC, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Can you believe they had trouble with a GMC at ninety-four hundred miles, Eddie?
It's just something.
It's just small stuff.
So, so this.
Wasn't like shocks going out out there.
So, this, so, so this unit is equipped with mass casualty equipment, such as blackboards and carts and where's a pop-up hospital with heating and air conditioning and the hot water heater. So, if we need to pop something up from the scene, you know, mass casualty event, we have it. All that's, all that equipment is in pack in its operation. Where we, as the Office of Emergency Management, our struggle was, in the event that if we had to deploy this unit, we didn't have the staff or the medical supplies to be able to properly deploy this. So, we've been talking to Donnie Grublin Berkeley Medical Center and kind of talking about a partnership where Donnie can help us out on that. And I'll acknowledge people a little bit about that, but.
Sure, thank you. So, what we would like to do for WBU Medicine Berkeley Medical is partner to ensure that we are able to stock all the medical supplies that are needed on that mass casualty trailer. We will maintain the medical supplies, we will restock, monitor expiration dates and such. We'd like to do this in a two-phase approach. Phase one, developing this agreement with Berkeley County Council, having a formal MOU for us to supply them medical supplies to the community if needed. And we'd also, in phase two, we would also to like to provide the personnel. We're currently working with legal, we'd like to have physician response in the field for mass casualty incidents to assist EMS if needed.
What is a mass casualty?
So, if we have a large-scale incident on the interstate, Interstate 81, we historically had, unfortunately, the large-scale accidents, we would be able to deploy this to provide additional resources to our local ambulance companies and not so much relying on outside agencies to come in to help support our needs. We would have the supplies and bring the personnel to our local responders.
Sounds like a great partnership, Donnie. Anybody have any questions?
I think it's a great idea. I mean, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, that's a tremendous asset for this corridor, especially on 81 corridor, Route 9. And also to our mutual aid communities as well. I mean, it's, it's a.
Where would it be housed? It's currently housed at the Emergency Operations Center.
So, it, once it's fully operational, it'd still be housed?
There'd still be housed there. Now, the, the trailer is a thirty, I think it's a thirty-two foot trailer. It's a pretty long trailer, so it's a little bit of a challenge getting it into the bay there. So, I'm working with South Berkeley Fire Department to see if we can house that in station point nine. Just the trailer. The truck itself can stay in our office. But I would like to get that trailer inside because the weather does wear on this house.
So, it's a problem because of the length of the garage, the depth.
Now, we can get it in the bay, but it's bumper to bumper.
So, you can't really access it?
You can't really access. You can get it in there, even to walk around, but you would have to put it outside. So, it'd be at the page. If we can't get it down to twenty-nine, if not, we will, we will manage it. We will, we might have to take out a couple of things along the wall, which you have, this is something you may have to take out. But we'll get it inside.
Yeah, but with Randy, I think you've got a key or two about this, this is, you know, for, for WBU to step up and, and offer to partner with us, and I think it's, it'll win in for everybody. And probably this is the only partnership like this in the state.
Yes, there's, there's a lot of the, well, there's nine of these units in Council McGuff and our department. I think there was nine of these units that were distributed across the state after nine eleven. Most of these units, I think, are, to what I'm understanding, from Sandy Green, who was our legions onto the state. Most of these units are in optimal because of funding, because when they were distributed out, it was up to the counties to maintain them.
Right.
And a lot of the counties don't have the.
So, did the state take them back?
No, not yet. There's, there's some talks in the states. Some of the counties have said, we don't have the money, we can't support it, what do we do with these? The state has not taken back. Honestly, from what I understand, the state does not want them back. So, there was a little bit of chatter at the state level.
So, they're going to up for all to get.
Well, the possibility was, is they're, so they're titled and insured by the state, so they're owned by the state.
Right.
There, there chatter that they're considering pushing them out to the counties, the title to the counties and say, here it's yours. Do you want it to assign the title to you? Then it's the holders.
To the counties that want to do it.
For the counties that want to.
Right.
I remember when we acquired this one, it was, I was on the ambulance authority at the time. And, and there was a question about how we were gonna maintain it, but it was done, you know?
And the ambulance authority still wants, still is involved in this, it still wants to be part of this. But they may be challenged in the event of a mass casualty.
I was gonna say, yeah, they're gonna be better.
Their status, probability on their units.
Right.
They still want to be part of this and support it as much as they can.
That's, that's what I was getting ready to say, is the thought process from WBU that this is going to, you know, if you could, if you can help out with this, it's going to significantly help if there was a mass casualty, the emergency rooms at the hospital, that type of thing. So, I mean, to me, it makes a lot of sense, and it, it, it makes sense to have a partnership with the, with the hospital that's going to be able to handling those issues when they come in.
Is it, is it somewhat restricted to Berkeley County or all three counties or? No, it is not restricted by the state. It is not. It's why they.
We had a region for it, if I remember correctly, when, when it was, it was as far as.
Region eight and nine, so Grant, Hampshire, Hardy, everyone in our state EMS region eight and nine. So, we are committed to that as well, if you as the county council say, we want to continue to have this as a regional. We're happy to supply our support, not just to Berkeley, but also as a regional response if there is an incident with Grant County or.
Well, is there a chance of picking up one of these unusual units and bringing that up here to have one in one year? Probably on the way to see how partnership, we're not with one first.
I mean, it'd be nice to have one here, one in Ramay or. Now, they do have one in Hampshire County.
TAN.
Yeah, they, they had it, okay. I didn't know if they said.
I'll say TAN.
Yeah, TAN has one. I know he's got the hazmat truck, but I don't know if he provided a nice casualty trailer or not. There was one cap, one region that said, we don't want it, and Hampshire County acquired that from them, even though they're in our region. So, they have the hazmat truck, but I'm not sure if they have a mass casualty. Back to another good question you asked previously, something that the councilman McGuff said when he was with the yards management. Can we, you mentioned, Kim, well, we're restricted. No, we're not restricted, and we cover, we're re, it's a regional response team. However, if we're not using that asset and someone out of our jurisdiction needs help, we don't say nothing historically.
Right.
And, but, but that's always something that we always bring before council before we do that, and I ask that question. Hey, can we go to Frederick County, Virginia and support these, these folks, you know, in the event that we're not using?
Same water, same way with the Swiftwater Rescue.
Swiftwater Rescue, you know. Anytime we go out in our jurisdiction, we always ask, get, get with Allen and, and we get council approval prior to doing that, but historically, you know, Teddy already said, we, we don't say nothing.
Well, that brings up another thought, being that WBU is with this one, and if we got another one, we'd value medical. If, you know, we share responsibilities since they're here too. Anyway, it was just.
I can't see, I can't see us having two here.
I can't either.
Somebody else, yeah, right.
Yeah, because there is expense to maintain that and.
But that would be.
Have accepted that.
But, yeah, going out of, out of state, like to Virginia or to Maryland, I mean, y'all would still, WBU would still be married? Okay, okay.
And, and also remember, we have, WBU Medicine has Salmon Valley Hospital and now Grant County. So, there are avenues, if there are additional trailers required for Region eight and nine. I don't want to speak right now on behalf of the executive leadership, but I feel certain that they would support the same of another county, Kaiser or, or Grant.
Alright, so.
This just illustrates again a tremendous level of cooperation that is kind of unique to here, that, you know, here. The WBU and Berkeley County and Ambulance Authority are all working together to provide a service that hasn't existed until now.
Yeah.
I just think this is, is very, very community for, for everyone.
Well, we, I mean, it, it's been very nice to be part of the government here in Berkeley County because of relationships that we continue to build. It's, it's how we get stronger, and it's how we become a, a better community. And, Donnie, I'd like to take this time out too, I've, I've, I've never, well, let me put it this way. I've always heard nothing but good things about you. And, so, I, I'd like to say thank you for everything that you do for, for WBU Medicine. Thank you for being such a good partner, you and the hospital for, with Berkeley County. And, it ain't gonna get better.
Thank you.
So, but it looks like we're just needing direction. Everybody okay to go ahead forward and draw up the paperwork and get this thing rolling?
Look, look, the MOU, and like we do with every MOU, we have the, the two legal departments, you're blessed and we'll bring it to the council for your review, formal adoption.
Okay.
We do have, our, our legal team is drafting an MOU for your legal team to review. It's just a template that we'd be happy to develop, and however, the legal team here would like to use around it, it would be fine.
He said right there.
We, we wanted to make sure we were, we got the ball rolling and we were able to hit this, hit this mission running.
And the idea of getting a physician on the ground on an incident could be a tremendous asset, not only to EMS folks responding there, but, you know, to the, to the folks who are involved in the incident themselves. So, that's another change in the process that I think will be beneficial should it occur.
Currently, there's not a program like that in the state of West Virginia. University of Maryland has the GO team, where they have physicians that respond to the field. So, we would be one of the first, again, but I think it highlights our partnership in this county will be truly are able to accomplish in the eastern paint handles opposed to the rest of the state, so.
Gives a whole new meaning to medicine in the field instead of the field of medicine.
Alright, so, direction is to carry on, move forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you all for your time.
And just so y'all know, this is our honorary council people there. Jackie's and my grandson, our grandsons are here with us today.
We would say it's daycare, but they would probably daycare us.
It's good to see the genuine faces in the council.
Once again, any given Thursday.
Geez, thanks, Alan.
I think, Jackie, here before long, I think, just go ahead, before we get into this, turn loose to you. But. Wait a second.
Somebody's bored.
Wake up my boy.
Got something over here you wanna do?
Yes.
Yes, we do, it's a little slow.
You forgot already.
No, I didn't forget, I was here because somebody was trying to, to dance door.
Is that what Granddaddy sounds like?
Worse.
The worst Jackie guy.
Sounds worse.
Alright, we have a birthday today. Oh, the store stopped.
Uh-oh, looky here.
It's Robert's birthday today.
Looky there, buddy. One, two, three.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Robert. Happy birthday to you.
Wow.
What is he getting another doughnut?
Alright, Manny, I'm gonna, happy, go ahead and take him out of here. We're gonna talk numbers here real quick. I need to be focused.
What is that, Bobby? Bobby Bats.
Thanks for coming in, buddy. Good to see you today.
I never go to this work.
Good to see you guys.
I was gonna kiss you.
Oh, no. Hey, y'all do a good job. Good job. Bye-bye, guys. See y'all later.
Bye, birthday boy.
Bye, Jackie. Happy birthday.
Wow, you're best.
See you guys.
Have to do a little housekeeping here.
Alright, Mr. Dan, start us off.
Alright, I have two final things on the agenda, and they, they both kind of go hand in glove. And it has to do with the health department funding and how we want to move forward with that, coupled with some of the supplemental funding and building projects that, that we have at the direction of, of the council. Lastly, we began working with bond counsel and bond underwriters on the issuance of ten million dollars of tax exempt bank qualified bonds this year. We hope to go to closing the first week in December.
And Greg still thinking things look promising?
Very promising. We're very, very fortunate that Matt Jaffe from Moody's has agreed to, to work with us.
Good.
So, he is intimately familiar with the county, and he's, he's the, the underwriter from Moody's two or three years ago that desperately, I think desperately, wanted to give us a, an increase in our bond rating. So, we specifically reached out to him to see whether he would be willing to work with us, and he's on board. Tuesday, Penny and I had a, had our first, probably of many, many conference calls with the bond underwriter and bond counsel regarding what we've done already as far as putting the, the resolution in place to reimburse ourselves for monies that we've expended on the LED lighting today, and we've already, we had a whole laundry list of, of takeaways from that meeting that, that we took care of yesterday morning. But as part of that conversation, they asked us to prioritize kind of what our, what our projects are. So, in the, in the absence of, of having a council person there, and I, and I told them I would get back to them if there was any changes. I indicated to, to them at, on, on the call that first and foremost is the LED lighting. That three million dollars we've already committed to. We have the contracts in place. And most of the hardware we actually have on site. It's being stored at 750 Baltimore Street. And I want to point out again that the purchase of 750.
It's really coming in. I was, I was smiling at you.
Was probably one of the best purchases we, we've ever made, and I.
How much was it, Dan? Three dollars or something a square foot?
Three dollars a square foot.
And that count the land.
December fifteenth.
We never have recognized Roy's pottery for that.
We talked about that a couple.
We gotta do that.
December fifteenth, I have, I think we have it on your agenda for you to down in four seven fifty. By that time, we have one more tire rack to get in down there, and our central garage is, is looking really, really, really good. And most of the work for the extension service expansion will, will be done.
Why can't we get a plaque and put it on the front of the building that just does, that, that just acknowledges the, you know, the, the.
Corporate participation.
The deal that was made, you know, so that we are putting something back out there. I mean, we told them when we were gonna buy it that we were going to do that.
We'll put something up there to look at.
Okay.
Um on the twenty fourth, um which is next Monday, um Blackstone Roofing will be there.
Actually starting.
Actually install the roof. They've been pretty busy this week.
And we have all our stuff off.
We've got our stuff off. Um we had. Pardon me?
Get the magical.
Clips are are in hand. Yeah, we had the crane on site this week, Monday or Tuesday to remove all the all the rooftop units. Um the gas pipe that has been rerouted, in fact, it was on last week's uh purchase order log. Um the piping that we need to run the the gas pipe on the on the interior of the building. So. Um if you get a chance on the next week, um we'll actually be formulating the steel panels on on site. Um so that's moving along. Um some of the steel replacement, um you know, we should we should have the windows soon. Um but if you go down there, we just had the extension service employees down there last week. And I think they were um amazed at the size of their of their suite. Uh it's very, very, very nice and much, much nicer than it they had.
And so much easier accessible.
It is. So that that project is is moving along. Um I emphasized uh on the call the need for five twenty South Raleigh Street. Um it's, as you know, the expansion of the David Report Center provided them with. Um some of the initial drawings and the cost estimates for that. Um that those two projects in and of themselves are about thirteen million dollars. So we didn't go much further than those two projects because that takes care of the first bond issue and um will um. Will roll right over into into the bond issue that we that we do in January. Uh I explained um your your vision for one ten West King Street. And also the need for the um for the build out of the Judicial Center at three fifteen West Stevens Street. At the council's direction, um as as you know, two or three weeks ago, I came to you with a proposal to do. Um fourteen thousand dollars worth of work um at the at the Health Department and be ready on time. The uh Community Development Block Grant um folks uh indicated that um we had to do um. Some additional work there. Um site assessment to include a physical environmental assessment. A social economics assessment, hazardous material, biological environmental assessment. Uh to the tune of about fourteen thousand dollars, which you you probably wanted, or so we're working on that. Uh we've had engineers on site. Um so uh you know, a lot of preliminary work's been done to the tune of about slightly more than two hundred thousand dollars that we've spent in. Architectural engineering and consulting firms. Um we know that um the price of uh construction, um we saw it in this building. We actually have the the second pre bid on this building uh tomorrow. But we saw when we we opened bids on this building that the prices have come in considerably higher than. They would have two years ago. Um so you know, our expectations that the addition to the Health Department, um the Health Department uh provided seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, which we put into a. A separate account. Uh Community Development Block Grant um is in the amount of six hundred eight thousand eight hundred two dollars. And the council had committed um slightly more than one point six million dollars of restricted. Uh American Restful Plan Act funds uh for that project. I expect. Uh as we move forward and we're not gonna put the the uh RFP out onto the street till we get all the environmental assessments done. Um and and as as I explained, you know, a couple of weeks ago, not only do we have to have all these assessments done, now we have to send it to the state. And um we have to send it to um US US Fisheries or US. We have to send it to the West Virginia DNR, SHPO, and the US Department of Fish and Wildlife. And we've been told that the US Department of Fish and Wildlife could take um several months before we get the approval. So we're looking at early, probably early next year before we even get the RFP prepared to get it back out the street. Um at the direction of the council, um Bill and I and Tracy Gilliams um met earlier this week. Um to discuss funding and my question to to Bill and Tracy was, you know, we've committed one point six million. Uh but we we know it's probably gonna come in considerably higher than that to the tune of anywhere from a million to two million dollars more, probably.
I'd say more than that, Mr. Davis.
You know, is there is there any grant money out there? Is there any additional state money money available? Is there, does the Health Department have any surplus that they may be able to to dedicate to to the to the building? Um we've identified the potential and it's. Very, very, very early of about fifty, between fifty, fifty five thousand dollars of FEMA. Reimbursements that are still outstanding that may be coming into the Health Department that. That the Health Board may may release for this building. I I I just need some direction um on on this and and that's kind of the first first. Part of this discussion and then I need to to talk to you a little bit about some of the commitments that we've made for some quality of life funding. So. Um that's where we're at with the Health Department. Um first of all, do you agree that LED lighting? In five twenty South Raleigh Street should be the primary focus of our. Of our efforts right now?
Well, Tim, Tim is totally out of space and we know that there's more programs he wants to put in place and.
And it's gonna expand since we've got that designation of.
Right.
Behavioral health.
Plus he got, plus he got the juvenile side.
Well, he and I met, I think it was early this week. All the things are ready to get either early this week or late last week. Probably by the first quarter uh of next year, if not before, both home confinement. And DRC will be at capacity. We'll have to start turning participants away.
Which we knew that was gonna happen. Um.
Well, I think it's always, I mean, you you know, at some point, I think we're, you know, in a growing community and those type of problems are gonna continue to happen unfortunately, but. I I still think that I still think that that money should, that that money should come from the um from the lawsuit money that's going to be allocated for regions. I think that there's a a large pool of money that's going to be put in and if we move forward. If we move forward with the thought process of, you know, getting getting all the plans done and finalizing everything, I think by the time we get that ready. Or the county gets that ready because I've only got a couple more weeks. I think by the time you get all that process done and and ready to go out for bid, I think you're gonna. I think you're, we're gonna have that funds available to apply for.
Well, it it depends on how long the process is and Stephen Skinner's coming in today.
He texted me, he was around a bunch of that COVID, so he's just gonna call.
He may call in today to give you an update. Um.
Well, the other thing too, that's gonna be regional money.
It will be. And and with this next bond, the bond issue that we're getting ready to do in December, um I've asked for a five year call. So that in five years, if we have that regional money, we we can pay that bond off.
Right.
So and that's the other reason I want to identify the first, the first bond issue, that first ten million dollars to to those two projects. And that's actually gonna be issued as a. Twenty twenty, twenty twenty A dash one bond, which will tie it to the the David Report Center. Um so that if we do get some of that money and the great next council decides they want to pay off that bond, we can do it within five. Uh after five years without penalty. Uh so we could, we've already set up um the special revenue account that um we we've actually started billing. That Medicaid um that as and it'll, we've been told by the feds it'll take a couple of months before we really start seeing the flow of that money. But as that money comes in, we're gonna put a rate, we're gonna put that rate in that special revenue account. Um the rent that we that we're charging the the Day Report Center, I intend to put in that special revenue account. Um so that as we build up some some funding in there. Um in in five years, hopefully we can pay off, maybe pay off a a ten million dollar bond, just stroke a check without penalty from that special revenue account. So.
All right, I'm trying to pull up emails. It's not cooperating with me, but um. The Day Report Center is how many square feet? Do you recall?
I don't remember it out, yeah, off my head.
About ten. No, it's a lot more than that, I think. I was thinking nine, something nine or ten, somewhere around there. I'm trying to pull, I I've seen Tracy forward stuff, I've seen. Uh Mr. Whitney forward stuff, but I can't pull the girl any up. And what's the addition size on the Health Department right now? You remember, or Bill?
About eight thousand.
Eight thousand.
I'd be a little closer to nine with that last modification I did for the generator.
Yeah, I got a small bump.
Now, there may be some miscellaneous funds that we can get for, for example, the generator. Uh but as far as bricks and mortar goes, Tracy said there just, it just isn't money out here. Program, programs, things like that, yes, but not bricks and mortar.
Really? I think it's just the opposite.
All right, um. I'm still trying to pull up the square footage. I mean, at eight thousand or nine thousand square feet, that four hundred. Dollars a square foot would be three point six million. Um the done building came in fifty percent more than what we thought it was. So it was six million, it came at nine million.
Budgeted, we project six, it came in at almost ten.
Almost ten. So I guess one of the things that we was hearing down in Charlestonville was that. Some of the projects that were shovel ready and were coming back. Were needing more funding because of the cost of construction these days. I know the the county council has fifty seven million dollars for the projects on the books right now. We're borrowing money to do it.
Actually, we're at fifty eight, seven or eighty.
Fifty eight, seven. And that's not finishing out the projects, the parks that we're talking about, that's just basically getting stuff started. It doesn't count fully. The South Berkeley Park is how much?
It's a million. We put, and this is part of your quality of life funding. Um the last discussion that we had, although the council has made no formal. Notion to do it was to provide three hundred thousand to the airport. Two hundred thousand to Legion Baseball. Uh earmark a million dollars for the development of the Inwood Park. And five hundred thousand for um the development of the Thrall Hollow Route. Now a trail for a total. Uh one million, one hundred and six, two hundred fifty one thousand to be funded out of the three point one million dollars in the quality of life.
Right.
And 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 I know some of those entities are. Ready for the recent release of that funding time. I'm gonna be late sometime in the next hour. I'm asking for direction on that.
Right. So I guess. If this project comes over budget, I know Mr. Davis already called you and asked if you had any additional funding and your answer was no. So. I guess I'm gonna have to reach out out to the state, have you to go out and reach out to the state and ask them if they're gonna have any more funding for something like this.
The um the.
And keep in, keep in mind, it's the state funding that's got us in this position.
Right. The addition of the um fifty, I believe it was fifty, fifty eight thousand. We were able to get a FEMA grant to take care of overtime during the pandemic. So.
Please.
So the uh additional fifty, fifty eight thousand, we were able to get by way of a FEMA grant to take care of overtime. We were reimbursed for three quarters of it and then they wait to close out the project to give you the final reimbursement, the final reimbursement.
Fifty six thousand, six hundred and seventy nine dollars and thirty percent.
So I could request to the Board of Health, um if we've reaffirmed this project, um I can request to the Board of Health that that be. Earmarked towards our building expansion as well. So it's not exactly what we need, but it's some to help in addition to the seven hundred fifty thousand previously provided and then as well as the six hundred eight thousand. The um necessity is, you know, we're looking at the future for the county. If you look in our parking lot right now, as I left, we have um our parking lot is is a good, many people in there and the lobby has even more. Um as far as when we're looking at um social distancing, as far as the amount of people in there just for clinics, which is great to see because that's a community coming in to your health department. But we need to make sure that we have space for the future. And I'm fearful that if we don't act at some point, we're gonna lose the funds that we did have. Um we need to look at, I don't know if any, Danny, you were talking about with the uh drug overdose money. If any, that could be maybe tapped into. I know you said regional, provide a regional, but one of the big parts that we have to deal with right now is our harm reduction program and looking at. Um of of having, when people come in for our clinical programs, which harm reduction is part of that, having them at a different area of the facility. Than what um the rest of the community may be coming in for environmental health. So there's not that privacy um when people are coming in. So we're, our plans are to create that. So that's one hundred percent confidential and privacy, but when you're sharing a a joint lobby in in central area coming in, you can't have that. So maybe we could tap into some of those funds for that as well. And I understand we, you know, the county, we're not the only agency in the county that's growing. Certainly with David Reporting Center and and we work cooperatively with all those programs. So we need to, I know we all need it. And there's only so much money to go around.
How how is the uh harm reduction working in the Health Department? We're hearing that there's some mixed vibes from the staff of of. Not feeling welcome, welcoming some of those people in.
Well. Yes, um but I don't care. Um it's a program we have to have. I'm sensitive to the the staff's concerns about it. Um and certainly they they deserve to have their concerns. Not all of our staff are clinically based. So again, this. This building expansion will help address those concerns of all the staff members. They all need to be um heard and their concerns need to be addressed. But the building expansion will address all those. So some of my staff are not as comfortable with some of the harm reduction participants coming in. Um but we have to have that program.
And you're a public.
Yes.
Health department and you, that's the people that you really serve.
Right.
The people that are fortunate enough to get healthcare and pay for it aren't the ones you serve.
Well, that's what I was gonna say. I mean, these, the people that are coming in for the harm reduction, they're the same people that are coming in for the other services.
Potentially, potentially, yes.
I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't get where that should.
Well, it's it's due to some instances that's happened throughout the programs and we we've worked through those and we've put some measures in place. So that they don't happen. Uh. But we have to have the program. It's a worthwhile program and we've had a lot of great success out of the program. So we're gonna continue to do that as long as there are funds there to support that program. But yet we also have to be sensitive to our our employees' concerns as well and they deserve to be heard and they were. So we did put measures in place to address those. I think they're way less than they did before. But again, with the building expansion, that's, you know, if you're coming for clinical services, this is your entrance for that. With your lobby there, that's for that, that's expanded for education, for social distancing. But if you're coming in for environmental health issues, um. Um this is your entrance to come in for that. So I think the plans were well created. And it's well created to not necessarily what we need today, but it will. But it will address definitely what we need for tomorrow.
I guess the elephant in the room. With everything that we've been seeing on our our things coming back is. Do we try to acquire more funding for the project before it goes out to bid? Because we don't want to waste anybody's time on bidding it, and then all of a sudden we scramble for money, try to scramble for money and not find it. Lawyers can say what they want to say, and, you know, money's coming, money's coming, money's coming, but more than likely, it's going to take a lot longer to get it than what anybody's saying. So I I I guess to you, Bill, and to Alan, I know that you're, you've been very concerned about where we're at, and where we're going, where we could go.
We we have. We have a very aggressive. List of. Programs and projects, all of which have merit. I feel better today than I did a month ago. With all, you know, with all the the different pieces, we have, we have all the American Rescue. All the American Rescue Plan Act funds committed. Except about $700,000. The general funding co-severance committed and encumbered money, that's already been set aside, so I'm okay with that. The the bank qualified tax exempt. Projects, as as councils aware, we decided to do all, all, all of them. Will require $10 million this year, $10 million next year, and $10 million in 2024. Which, after talking to bond council and underwriters, knowing that in seven years. We're going to have two thirds of our existing debt load paid off. We we can make, we can make that work. Shifting 1.1 million dollars of the supplemental funding projects. From that 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 last, that last list. To be funded out of quality of life funding certainly, certainly helps. I I just didn't want Bill and the health department and the council. To to think that when we put this out on the street next March or April, or May, whenever we do it. If it, I mean, we've committed three, we have $3 million committed.
And right now, with what Bill got and what the health department's done, and what we put in, we're about 50/50.
Right.
Right, you got the grant, you threw in 750,000, or the board did. And we pulled pulled in, we're all stronger than what you are, we're 1.6 and change, you rounded out to 3 million.
So we've got 3 million. If it comes in at 5 million, or 5.5 million, or $6 million, I don't know where the funding is going to come from.
All right, so so let's say it comes in at 4.5 million. I mean, that's, that's still over $400 a square foot.
Right, but that's really close to where you're going to be.
In today's world?
Yeah.
I think so, so I guess the the question is, is. So that's going to be a 1.6, 1.5 million.
Right.
Right, we got to find 1.5 million.
Is there an opportunity to shrink the building?
Well, I was going to ask, next thing I was going to ask was, not so much shrink the building, but do the same thing we're doing with the day report center. And not finish the second floor, it could be an option if we had to.
Well, with the plans, we haven't placed the second floor, it was all the administrative office.
I know it is, I know it is. But I'm just saying, push come to shove.
And and I I talked to Alan definitely all, all session. About some of those as well, there's, I mean, there's ways to work around any issues of of Bill. As long as we still have the goal in sight, at least we're, if, like you said, if you did the first edition, and then we have to wait maybe a little bit longer to. Finish the second floor. At least we're addressing some of the needs. We're not addressing them all.
Right, and and what I'm thinking, Bill, is the first floor itself, if you had to, for any reason, the. Naturally, it's it's great to do the whole building, right, but at the same time, you got to be able for it, we got to be able for it, up to the, up to, up to date, we've done 50/50 funding. Right, well, now whole building, since the day we bought it.
Luckily, we were able to do that.
We were, we were, and I remember those conversations in the hallway, just like yesterday.
Yes.
So I I guess the the question is, you know. I think the first thing you're probably going to do if it goes out on bid, right, when it's ready, because I think it's going to be spring, my recommendation, I'm not going to be here. My recommendation would be to put it out on bid with the option, the first floor being done, second floor being built, first floor being finished, second floor. Option to to.
Basically a two-phase.
Huh?
Basically a two-phase.
Yes, just in case, right, it's easier to bid it that way than it is to come back.
Right. But I think that's also a good idea to to try to analyze what part of this would be. Directly contributed to the opioid epidemic and those type of issues, so that when that comes back. At least you have that put together to be able to go after some of that funding, to be able to incorporate that into it. And that may be able to, you may be able to go after and get what you need in that difference just from that one source.
And knowing that it's going to probably more be more drakel to get the RFP on the street anyway, gives us an additional four, five, six months. To to see if we can.
Possibly other grants that are, that may come along, similar to, you know, a grant that would be able to possibly pay for the emergency or the whole facility generator there. We could carve that out right now, it's not something we have, it's something we need in the new addition. Because we find value in that, but maybe there's, it's hard to find grants for brick and mortar, but it's a little bit easier for the grants for equipment.
The thing about the generator too, if you had to, you can always pre-plumb, pre-wire for the generator, switch gear and all that stuff.
But don't purchase the tank and the generator.
Right. Because we all know the generators typically, you'll use a diesel generator anyway.
I just didn't want to have to walk in here when we open bids. If the council so chooses to put this out in the street in the spring and say. We don't, we don't have funding for it because everything's committed.
Well, it's no different than a done building, we're taking, we're already taking things out of the done building, we took the HVAC out because we can do it better in. We can do it for less money in-house. As as subbing that out ourselves.
Yeah, that's taken in excess of a million dollars off of the bid that we had gotten, so, yeah, we are, I mean, we're. We're fine tuning this, this building even more.
I guess with Mr. Mala's here, we could ask him about the heating and cooling in that building and the health department, whether that's something that that we want to pull out of. But I I just don't want to put this thing out the bed, it comes in, we know it's going to come in over budget, $3 million on a building like that right now, it's not going to be enough. I can't remember the square footage, ask Tracy Penny, call Tracy up and ask her to find out how many square feet the addition to the day report center is on all three floors. Please. Tracy McCormick.
Yeah, when we're looking at the two-phase, I mean, the second floor, as you know, is mainly all administrative offices. We're kind of busting at seams in some parts of our environmental, which is is very important, but we have five, five. Environmental sanitariums working in an office with every file cabinet that we can't get rid of right now because we don't have everything digitized. That they're all crammed into one office, and doesn't give them any room to meet with individuals one-on-one. So the plans were with moving with the building expansion, have the nursing offices and nurse director, which we're very glad to have. Moved over to their offices in there, and then our environmental health sanitariums will be able to move over, and the room that's right now that they're in would just be a file room. So it's critical that even with this being a two-phase possible, we don't lose sight of that second phase, it just can't be something that's put down the road. We we need it now, but also understanding that all, that all are answered.
I would think that with the generator, I mean, through all our exercise, we had.
We put it in every exercise, as you know.
About the need for the generator, for your coolers in particular, for your vaccines, whatnot, we just went through this. With COVID, and the problem was keeping some of the vaccines at their current temperatures that they needed to be maintained at.
Right.
There was a challenge from time to time to be able to do that, so had we had a power failure in that event, we would have lost tremendous amount of vaccines available to the public.
Which is why vaccines had to be stored at the hospital.
Yes, so I I would really encourage to get perhaps Tracy and see if there's any type of FEMA funds or state funds. Through emergency management, that the generator funds can be come from.
And I believe that the recent exercise we just had was also placed in early, and we placed that in the after-action reports of pretty much every exercise we've had, but. We had to turn down from the state, they were going to provide us with an ultra-cold freezer. We had to turn it down, number one, we didn't have space in our room to put it, and number two, we couldn't guarantee that there was flawless continuation of power to that ultra-cold freezer. Because COVID vaccine is so temperamental that it couldn't be out of temp, it had to be on an automatic emergency generator, and we didn't have that, we basically have a worksite generator. Gas generator of 10,000.
Cool, lots. All right, so I guess it sounds like what we're trying to say, we all got to find some of this for funding.
But I think we also still have a reconfirmation that this project needs to go forward for the county.
As long as we get to funding, right?
Definitely, we can work with our state, federal.
Unfortunately, we can't, we can't print money like the federal government does.
Be nice to them.
You know, it it it, the thing I want to point out is the council has identified slightly more than 1.6 million dollars of American Rescue Plan Act funds. That this clearly, this project clearly qualifies for. State of West Virginia has many millions of dollars in ARPA funds more than we have. You would think that the state would find some ARPA funds to help with this.
I know, anybody ask me, I know, I I I haven't.
So it's something for us to maybe investigate.
It's it's good money.
It's clearly ARPA project.
Especially if you tell them that the grant that we just got from, or they got from, and how much time is delaying the project?
If we could get, and that that money has to be committed by the end of 2024, so even if we get a commitment for another $2 million, that would, that would put us over the home.
And I think it will help definitely with our programs and staff concerns, this will fix a whole multitude of concerns, issues that we're dealing with. So some other ones we're dealing with, but this will fix many that we have.
All right, so I guess we're politely saying, find some more money.
We'll work together.
Huh?
6,500 each floor.
Yeah, so 18, 19,500. So let's say it's, it's. All right, so let's say 13, let's go 13, 16,000. We got 6, 625 dollars a square foot if you just count half the second floor.
Again, that's what I was just looking at, at about 200 dollars a square foot.
That puts you at 5.6.
What'd you go with that?
I I I took two floors are finished and half the floor that's unfinished, so 13.
I did the same thing, only I just did unfinished floor at half right, so I come up with 65, or 6.5 million.
I come up with 6, 6, 625 a square foot, our budget on that's 10 million.
There's the stuff.
That came from architecture.
Four and a half per floors.
8,000 as well.
Those were the things that are coming in, huh? There's some remodeling there too.
Yeah, that's right, you got some in there outside.
Right, 10 million. We don't want to be on the low side on that one.
On the low.
I mean, we may be a little strong, but. The done building was missed by 50%, and that was done by the architect.
And we thought that one was going, this one was going to be easy because.
All the ones, yeah, all the ones we put a number on, we came under budget. And the architect's the one that put the budget number on this one too.
We need to find 3 million dollars.
Minimum 1.5, I would say.
We got to find it some, it's good seed money, we need to.
I guess when you leave here, if you got time, we're going to talk to Tracy in the hallway and see. All right, all right, thank you.
The the second part of this discussion is, as I, as I mentioned earlier, several weeks ago. I think the consensus of the county, although of the council, although no form of vote was, was taken. We currently have slightly more than 3.1 million dollars in your quality of life fund. You indicated to me, as I put in your spreadsheet, that out of that fund, you were interested in funding 300,000 dollars to the airport. Which was a combination of monies that were, that we needed, not only for the airshow, but also for. Educational area adjacent to the to the terminal. 200,000 dollars for Legion Baseball, and I know there's been some additional funding. That's being provided by the city of Martinsburg, and maybe even the Development Authority, and there's been some discussion. A million dollars to be set aside and encumbered. For the development of the Inwood Park project, which was presented to you. Some of the tentative design work that presented to you two weeks ago. And 500,000 dollars to be set aside for the Thralk Hollow Route 9 Trail for a total of 1,106,251 dollars. Is that still the desire of the council, and if so?
Didn't didn't we already vote on the, on part of that? I thought we voted on the Legion money.
The Legion money you did, but the other, the other projects you kept not.
Number of Macy's.
Yes, the 375, the first 375, not the second 375.
Okay.
Because we sent the second 375 back, we actually received a check. We we sent that, we sent that back, it was sent just by mistake.
Anthony, one of the things that, or somebody needs to craft something up and send it out to all of our, our large businesses that we've worked along with. And let them know what we're doing with the quality of life projects, because Mr. Gokeniron, I was speaking, he's having a conversation with some others. We know we're working with one on a pilot right now, but I don't want to just offer that to one company, I want to make sure that all the companies that we've done business on has an opportunity to do the same thing. Because I don't want one of them to come back, or or multiple of them come back and say, well, you never gave us that chance, right? And some of that would be naming rights along with that contribution for so many years, okay? But I think we need to send those letters out to 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 the Macy's, and to the P&amp;Gs, and to the Clorox, and stuff like that.
To the Quads.
Yeah, the Quad, and all, I mean, all, you know, GM even, and stuff that's been here for years.
We've had conversations when, during pilot programs that. You know, that monies could be used for specific things that would help, you know, help benefit.
Yeah, and some of them, I mean, Clorox did, you know. And, yeah, and some of them, I mean, Clorox did get the pilot. So, I mean, our, our quality of life payment, um, torched it. Um, and so-
Interwoven, they agreed to.
Yes. Yeah. So, I mean, there, there's, Interwoven, we're thinking, actually, we was thinking that the, the, the bike path would be-
Towards that, right.
Towards that, right.
Well, in the, in the million dollar commitment that you've made for the Inwood Park, we, we owe, we'll own the Inwood Park. So, you know, as long as the consensus of the council is we're gonna kind of encumber that money and set it aside as well as the $500,000 for the FROK Hall Route Nine Trail, again, we're doing nothing more than for future councils saying we've, we've encumbered that money for, for that purpose. But guess what I really need direction from, and I talked to, to Nick Deal earlier this week, um, they're really wanting to grow down that $300,000 and, and I can't release that unless the county takes some, some kind of action.
They're being faced with an increase on the educational part of like 15%?
Nine percent.
Nine percent?
So-
And you don't pull the trigger before the first of November, I believe.
So if the council could at least consider that.
Well, entertain a motion on the $300,000 to the Eastern West Virginia Regional Airport.
I'll move to do that.
I have a motion on floor. Give me a second, a second. Any discussion? If not, all fair, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
Taking out the quality of life fund?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So we, we, when we, when we talked about all that and when we were talking about this the last, not the last time, I guess the time before that, we talked about the Apollo Theater and about, about trying to get grants. And, um, to my understanding that there's no grants available for them to do what they need to do.
Even on the historical side?
Right.
Well, having, having, I'm glad you brought that up, uh, councilperson Bill Fairdaleier. Um, as you can see at the very bottom where it says supplemental funding projects, um, the, we, we've discussed the acquisition. If you look to the, to the tan colored portion of that, we talked about setting aside $500,000 for Sports Miss Paradise land acquisition. Again, that's one of your projects that as the land becomes available, we can decide what we, what we want to do with it. Um, we did get the appraisal of the Falling Waters, uh, waterfall. Um, initially I had plugged in $250,000 and that appraisal came in much lower than, than that. Um, the, a land adjacent to the Morgan Park project, um, we plugged in a hundred thousand. Again, that appraisal came in more than, slightly more than, no, slightly less than that. So those are, those aren't anything that we really have to address now. So if you look at the, the green column to the, to the left, by consensus, we've moved $300,000 out of that for the airport that we're paying out of the quality of life fund. We moved $200,000 out of that for Legion Baseball that we're paying in quality of life fund, of a quality of life fund. So if you deduct that 500,000 out of the 996-135, that now gives us a balance of 496-135 with the Apollo Theater being just about half of that. So the, the other projects are fairly small. Um, councilperson Gokenhour and I met with, yeah, Mike then, Roger Engel, like two or three weeks ago, and they did discuss the, the needs of the, of the, of the Apollo.
Well, they've, they've got a lot of momentum going there. I mean, they've made, uh, some major investments there. I know that the city has, uh, contributed, uh, to them as well. And they're, they're doing a lot of things on their own now, really trying to break out and just do things differently. Look at different revenue streams, uh, different shows and that kind of stuff. So, uh, they want to be able to use that second floor. Uh, you know, they, they want to be able to get an elevator for that use, uh, to the second floor to be able to open up additional opportunities for revenue. So they're, they're doing a lot of, of work through there. The, the streetscape that's been done by the city, uh, I know Stevens painting has, has been in there doing the face of the building. It looks really, really nice. So, you know, it's just another part of the puzzle of, of bringing this building back to life and, uh, investing in the arts in Burkey County.
They have a, they have a private investor that now that's willing to, um, help them with a significant amount to start the elevator as well.
How is the elevator working on the backside of the building? That's my problem. My, because I know years ago they were talking about the elevator being to the right of the front lobby.
It, it will be on the southwest corner is my understanding. It won't be on the back, but it'd be on the back corner of the west side.
But it's on the backside of the stage. So I guess it, we have a little lobby to go up to the second floor?
I don't know. What's the design? I haven't seen the design of it. But I can ask and get a copy of that if you want to look at it. I'll ask, I'll ask Roger.
Yeah, because it's a puzzles man.
Yeah. I, I agree.
The ballroom would have its own entrance, it sounds like, which means that the people from, on the first floor, you couldn't use the first floor and the second floor together without going through the stage.
Yeah, I don't know.
It'd be different if it was in that back hallway, you know, back years ago, or the southeast, no, south, that would be southwest corners.
How big is the elevator?
So maybe that's what they're doing.
I think that's where it's going. It's on the southwest corner.
So it's going to join that fire escape probably.
Did they ever acquire this building? They're getting ready to do it. Yeah. Yeah. I think I was told that, um, until they tore down that, uh, um, there was some stuff being stored in there, but they actually had a conversation with that individual and he's going to get his, underneath the, the blocks there and, so.
I would like to spend our money on that kind of stuff, you know, establishing perimeter of the building and, you know. So-
One thing, one thing that's going to really hurt that building or the shows is that HVAC system. It's all crippled.
They spoke about that. And I don't remember what the resolve was, but, but they, they discussed that during our conversation.
When they'd have those discussions.
Oh, they have, they have an event coming up, uh, um, but I think it's the 29th, it's a Tuesday. I think it's Tuesday, the 29th.
There is one on Tuesday. I thought it was just past Tuesday, the 29th?
There was one this Tuesday.
Okay.
About aviation.
Right, exactly. That's what I thought.
There's one on Tuesday, the 29th, and, uh, and the, all the proceeds are going towards, uh, um, towards the building renovation project. So it's-
But I, I bet you that HVAC would be 1.5, 2 million dollars?
Oh, I mean, it, it's gonna be-
They'll do all three floors.
Yeah, it's gonna be a bunch. I mean, the one that's there, it works, but it just doesn't work.
Well, it works on heat wise, but no AC.
No, I think there's, I think there's some AC that just doesn't, it doesn't produce enough to handle it.
And apparently the noise.
They shut it down when the show's on.
I think that's the actually, actually interferes with some of the activities.
They'll call it during intermission. They shut it down when the place is going. So-
Maybe somebody would donate a couple of big units that they could put on and put all them splits along the side or something.
Well, my recommendation would be if they would, and I know we always lean on Gary all the time, but seeing like Gary knows HVAC and if Bowler's doing, that's a wonderful job. I mean, it's just, it's, it's, to me, it's a, that's, you need to have somebody like that to do the system like that.
Right. But I think that's another part of the puzzle. I mean, like, like Eddie was saying, I mean, if you look at, you know, I think they're doing a really good job of planning and moving forward with these steps. They're doing, you know, they're, they're creating events now to raise money. You know, they're, they're, they're seeking out and, and they listened to our advice when we told them to put together a business plan. I mean, they, they're listening to our advice on this next coming event on how they're going to attract the public and stuff, so.
I agree with that. I'm just saying, you pack that place, you pack that place with 400 people in the middle of summer, not fall and spring, you got a problem.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Mr. Ryan, how you doing?
I'm good, sir. How are you?
Come on up here, please. Thank you.
Wasn't you talking, really?
I was. The Polisic Theater for years has had an HVAC system. The Bowler in the basement's probably older than the one that was, is in the, just as old as the one in the courthouse, right? Which we know we got our own problems. HVAC, I'm pretty certain when I say HVAC in the, um, theater itself only comes on when you're, during intermission and before the show starts. But when the show starts, it, it shuts down because it's so noisy. To me, I think a three-story building like that and with 400 people being able to go in there, plus 200 some people in the ballroom, it's gonna take a huge system, a very well thought out system. Is, is, is that something that, um, we can lean on somebody to tell us what needs to be done there?
Sure, sure. You, you have a unique opportunity. Uh, you're about to retire six 30-ton rooftop units that have been very well maintained, that, that are about to come off the roof of one of your buildings, two of which have about 40,000 dollars worth of brand new equipment in them doing lightning strikes. So there's opportunity for you, if you so chose.
To recycle that. The problem about the-
I don't know you want to put that much load on a roof up there.
Well, you can't put it on the roof, but-
Not the roof.
Pay's not the roof.
But yes, we, we, you, we do have relationships and we can have a, a probably a very cost-effective study to give you some design concepts.
Well, the problem with that building is it's kind of like the courthouse, that a 100.
No, agree with that.
You, you can't, you're not gonna run ductwork through that historical building and make it look good.
Yeah.
So it's gonna have to be piped and head units and, um, a, a system like we, you know, like we done, like we done at-
That's great.
You know, something of that nature that, I mean, right now you could get very creative probably. I, I looked at it 10, 12 years ago, before a lot of money, and this is what I'm getting at, before a lot of money is being spent in that up second floor ballroom and aim to the third floor, you can turn back around and maybe send stuff through the floor choices of the second floor to get the piping through to the first floor, you know, and, and it'll all be done up in nice ceiling panels or-
Yeah, I mean, it's-
Wall units or something like that.
It's just, it's commercial mini splits is what it is. It's very original VRL.
Right, I understand.
Right. So, yeah, that, in a building like that where aesthetics are important and you can't just go cutting the-
Well, the higher you put them, the more effective they're going to be. I mean, in those areas, you need them up high. All the heat's going up. So you need to drop that air from the top. I mean-
But what I'm saying is you don't want to finish, you don't want to get the second floor open and then all of a sudden decide, hey, I need to put, you know, 50 tons of AC in this building.
And then new airflow, fresh airflow.
Right.
Huge also, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And that's where you have opportunities.
Maybe that board, honestly, maybe that board needs to sit with people who have that understanding because I doubt that the board members have the mechanical knowledge that's needed to make those decisions.
Ask Tracy if there's any money out there because you just said the magical word, fresh air.
You see it.
Like the place where people congregate in large crowds with money out there, maybe, maybe there could be some funding from the feds of-
Fresh air.
And plus historical, being historical. But, you know what I mean? It's just, I, I, I'd rather see the AC done before the second floor gets open because now you just eliminate 50% of chances of cooling the first floor.
Right. And Alan and I have already had a conversation. Those particular units that have value will get on stored. We even talked about seat container.
750 Baltimore Street probably.
Things filling up. We have to be careful. So just so you know.
Yeah. Thanks.
Yeah, this, you know, this, this, the council president Gokenhour, pointing to getting Larry here, you know, we've decided to, to revit this building. Um, and we've removed mechanical and HVAC out and have been able to shave.
Fifty grand?
Oh.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's right. I forgot that was, uh, had an extra zero on it, didn't it?
Yeah.
Um-
Which will help us a lot.
Is it an option? We talked about this earlier. We know that the health department addition's gonna come in over budget. We feel very strongly about that. Is that something that we would entertain to take the mechanical out of that?
We, we very much could and at least look at it. I mean, we have drawn mechanics and we have build plans. So yes, we could run them through our efforts and see what it would look like. Because we eliminate the, the GC markup, a few, a couple other things that could impact that.
Right.
And, you know, we'll be providing the subcontractor draft and they, but they already understand that they have work GC to get done.
No, I mean, a rule of thumb is you should be able to save 20% on, I mean, you should be able to save about 20% on your HVAC costs.
Plus buying, plus buying costs, running the management, plus buying. So yes, sir.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Ryan.
Well, so, so I would like to move forward with the Apollo. I mean, what, what we've, what they've asked for was this money for a specific cause. And although we can sit here and guess back and forth on other ways to improve that, they've asked for money for a specific cause to help put the marquee back on.
$245,000 will put the marquee back on, I hope. But I know years ago it was a hundred grand.
Yeah, no, that's what it is right now. The 245.
Is that a motion?
It is.
Okay. Have a motion on floor. Have a second?
I'll second.
A second on the motion. Any more conversation about the Polisic Theater?
So we'll put money in the marquee and not into what truly need?
Put it into what they're requesting.
Yeah.
I guess you could, I mean, I'm not gonna, I, I, I think that they're doing an excellent job with what they're doing and moving forward right now. And so this is their recommendation.
I don't have a problem with the marquee. Uh, only thing I was bringing up, my conversation was is, let's not forget that the biggest problem that we're gonna have, or they'll have at the Polisic Theater is HVAC. That's huge. I don't have a problem with the marquee.
And I, and I think that, uh, you know, the conversation we had about the elevator, I think is a good, is a good conversation too. And I'm, I'm gonna look into that and see, you know, I'm gonna, you know, look at, um, and I'll have a conversation with them about the, uh, about doing the, the high-end mini splits, if you will. I forget what they're actually called, but-
Yeah, cassettes.
Cassettes.
Cassettes, yeah.
Yeah. And, and, and maybe something, what I'm, what I'm getting at on that, it may be something just so simple that when you're building the elevator shaft, maybe you have to have a mechanical shaft as well.
Well, I get it, yeah.
You know, just don't, it's kind of like having that business plan. Don't put a new floor down before you put a new kitchen in.
It just kind of seemed like that that organization, you know, they, they have, I, I can remember back in the seventies when Colonel Stover was taking over that project and trying to get that facility turned around to where they could start using it as, within compliance, let's do it that way. And they have, they have worked. I mean, and that's a heck of a building to try and keep up. It's a huge building. It's an old building. It's a beautiful building, truthfully. And, and I really and truly believe that right now that this board is hitting on all cylinders. I think they've got some new blood there. They're looking at different ways of trying to do things. You know, with the work that's, like I mentioned earlier, with the work that's been done on the exterior of the building, the streetscape that's been done, I, I think it-
Putting the wires on the ground.
Yeah.
The city done, they put them underground.
It's very nice.
Um, I, I, I will make a suggestion, not, but it sounds like to really enhance the opportunity for the Polisic Theater, you need to make another, they need to do a, another committee that necessarily would have to be board members, but a building committee that would come back to the board and make recommendations on the, and that committee should be people that have experience. That's, that's how you get things done.
That sounds like somebody's volunteering to sit on a committee. That's what it sounded like to me.
I'm just saying.
Sounded pretty, pretty close to it, yeah.
But, but it sounded like you just volunteered himself.
I will definitely pass that on.
Now, we're, we got a, we got a, we got a motion on floor.
You want me to call for the question?
Uh, yes, sir. All in favor, say aye. Uh, yes, sir, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nah, anyone opposed? Alright, Mr. Davis.
Take it out general fund?
Yeah. That's what you recommend?
I'm, I'm, I'm asking.
No, I'm asking you, are you, is that your recommendation?
I don't know why you couldn't take it out of the quality of life fund as well.
Yeah, let's, can we take it out of the quality of life funds, because we're gonna be replenishing that. Um, and I certainly think this is all part of it, but-
Right. Quality of life then.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on that stuff?
No, sir, you took a pretty big bite out of what I needed.
He's feeling hurt over there.
No, no, I'm, I'm, like I said, I've, I've had a chance, as you know, I probably spend time every day with this and I'm feeling better about what we're doing.
Well, the good thing, and I wanna put, say this, a good thing that we're doing here is we're working along with the Pollock Civic, Civic Theater on this, but we're also working along with our, our, our city of Martinsburg elected officials. They, they've put a lot of focus on Martin Street, that intersection, um, the Shandor Hotel, alright? And the, you know, we've got big plans for the Roundhouse, if we're gonna get more money for that, but-
And I think it goes hand in hand, exactly. I mean, if you look at the money that they're spending and the efforts they're doing to create a trail through Martinsburg and us spending the efforts to connect it to an existing trail, I think it's huge.
Right.
You know, and, and that's, you know, that's a, that's a really, really good part.
Glad to hear it, I'll tell you that.
Yeah.
I was quite surprised how interested they were in that. Yeah.
Taken a while.
And, uh, that gets done, I, I, I think it'd be nice to one of us reach out to Bill Yearout and let him know, maybe he could come back and ride, be one of the first bikes on that trail.
Yeah, he lived that tenure.
Yeah, that's all he was talking about. Alright.
That's all I have, sir, for open session.
Alright, so, um, any items from the puppy? Alright, it appears that we're going into executive session.
We're gonna go into executive session four.
Litigation in real estate.
Whatever you say.
Alright, we're in executive session.
All right, we're out of executive session. We're back in open session. Is there any motions to be made?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to give the president of the county council the authority to sign a release for the statewide opioid settlement agreement involving, I'm assuming this is Teva or Teva, Jansen, Allergan, CBS, Rite Aid, and Walmart.
That all of them? All right. Motion on floor in a second. Any discussion on those motions? If not, all in favor say aye. I'll give the president the authority to sign. All right, I'm sorry. All in favor say aye.
Want to say it again?
Yeah, all in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion passes.
Tim and the boys had too much sugar.
Any other activity?
Yes, there is. Mr. President, I move we enter into the real estate purchase agreement with the Roach family and the purchase of the property in the amount of $732,257.24 and give legal directors the ability to sign all the documents pertaining to the closing.
Second. And we have a motion on floor in a second. Any further discussion?
Do you want me to include for the purchase of the property that adjoins the poorhouse farm park out there?
That'd be fine.
And its entitlement or encouragement or boundaries there?
All right, all in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? The motion carries. Anything else?